Anytime.
Yep, live just disconnected.
All right.
Okay.
Fifty-five seconds late.
Yeah.
I took that long to do it.
Good evening, everyone. I will call this meeting to order of the DeKalb County Commissioners. The date is December 28, 2022. The hour is 6 o'clock. It's kind of different for us. About my bedtime, but we'll suffer along here.
I did get a nap this afternoon.
Did you get a nap? I did too. Lita, is your mic on?
It is.
Let's get started with you and get you out of the way and get you going and...
Thank you. Okay, I believe you've received a copy of the contract. The only difference, uh, the only difference is Fiddler is now, um, they would do all our billing and do all the collection of the search fees for Tapestry and for, um, Laredo, okay? Now they've upgraded and now we're on Laredo Connect, which now they will send the bills, but all the money comes straight to us. They pay us directly, whether it's through check, whether it's credit card, ACH, whatever. And so they wanted to start it right away and I go, whoa, stop right there. I need time to get this. We've done some training, but we've got more coming. So it will actually take effect. They will, it, we will bill the first of February for January. So that's when we will start. And so what we needed to do, we needed to revise the contract. Paragraph four is the only thing that we revised. It's when the payments, um, they have to be in by 3:45 to get credited, um, for that day. Um, if we don't receive payment within 15 days, we have the option, I have the control, to suspend their subscription until we receive payment in full. There, and it does lay out the convenience fees. Um, one's 5%, one's one and a half, depending on how they want to pay it. Um, that's basically it. I did, um, get this all typed up. I did take it to Jim. He reviewed it. He made some tweaks in it. That's the only thing we changed was number four. What we changed before was number six where I had, uh, and what caused us to put number six in was I had a lady out of Elkhart that wanted to search in DeKalb. She would do a subscription and then two days later cancel it. And she would constantly do that. So now we made it, they have to give us a 30-day notice. So we get a full month of their time.
Do you remember when we did this? Do you remember when we did this last year?
Um, it was earlier, I think, in the year.
Okay.
I'd have to look.
That's okay.
Yeah. Um, so, um, these, these require, and I always want the commissioners to at least probably bill, bill sign the last ones as president, um, to sign it so it takes the pressure off of me. Let's make the commissioners responsible. Um, so that's all it is. That's the only thing we changed. If you reviewed number four, that's the only thing we changed in this contract for this year. If nothing changes, we shouldn't need to re, we shouldn't have to change it next year. That's the only reason it's been changed, and I've come every year, is because we've had a substantial change.
Who sets the convenience fee?
That's the, the credit card companies. We have nothing to do with that.
I've, I always found that term to be an oxymoron. Here's your convenience fee for the only way we'll accept payment. Here's your additional 5%, but you know, it's...
Um, you know, they can do check, cash, whatever.
Okay.
This will help, uh, this, I've got the City of Auburn on and they come on late last year. They were really hesitant because they had no connection with Fiddler. They had no clue who they were sending a payment to or anything, and they wanted us to be... And so now that, they went ahead and signed up, but that now, I told them to hang on, we would be getting there.
Great.
Any other questions, comments?
I read it. I'm good with it.
You're good with it?
Mm-hmm. Since it seems to have been good, but just those changes, I don't see any reason to have a problem.
Okay. You maintain a motion?
I'll second Todd's good with it.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the new contract. How's that?
We have a second, then a motion.
Okay, yeah.
Any, any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lita.
Okay.
Will you just email that to me, please?
Record it first, okay? I'm in a good mood tonight.
Yeah, I guess.
Wow!
That's a good thing. Alrighty. We have no claims. Let's go to minutes.
I don't think there's any speakers out there.
Sorry.
No.
What's your one?
Speakers out there. There's not speakers.
Yeah.
They'll be on YouTube, though.
Yeah.
It's on, it's live right now.
Oh, it's live on YouTube?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, they can't bring it up on their phone, so...
Yeah, yeah.
But they don't have their phones.
Something I forgot to mention, we are live. So...
Behave.
Audio, hand, visual, or video. Uh, okay, minutes. Chance to read the minutes. Any problems with the minutes?
Read your previous presentation.
Second.
And motion second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Minutes are approved. Payroll. Should we pay them?
Make a motion to approve payroll.
Second.
Motion second, approve payroll. Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same. Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Susan, what you got?
Okay, I did not know. Um, we received the red line version of the consultant agreement that, with Sculpin Solar with their proposed changes. I don't know if you guys wanted...
Did you have, did you review that, Andrew? Did you get, and looped in on that?
I did look at the Sculpin. I'm trying to see if I can pull it up here from, uh...
That's the red one.
Um, let's see, I made some notes on that. The broad, is that the, no, no, that's not the broadband consulting. That's the solar, uh...
Solar, yeah.
That's the agreement for the consultants and site inspections and...
Um, I noticed that Sculpin, uh, will pay for those fees. Uh, they can give notice at any time that it will no longer pay anymore. So I mean, it's sort of, it's, uh, and any unused portion of fees are to be returned to them, but that makes sense. So they keep the right to stop this at any time that they want to, is the way I read that.
Yeah. Um... And I wasn't sure. I read that, that they, if they stop the, the progress of the project, then they can, then the consulting fees would, would end.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and the, um, I believe that I heard that Jim had already approved that concept of the agreement in the past, so...
Yeah. Did we, I think they took, or did they put a cap in?
They did put a cap. I think it was 250 or two, let's see, what was it?
Two hundred?
Um, 150. Well, wait. No event shall they be able to send it amount to...
I think they kept...
200.
200?
Yep.
I, I...
I think it's 15...
I would be more comfortable with 250.
That's all just a negotiation thing, I guess, so, yep.
Hold off on that then and...
Uh, yeah, let's shoot that back to them with that one change.
Okay.
On the cap, and then when we get a reply, we can hold on that.
Okay.
Okay, we'll put that to hold. Okay, so then I had the, um, broadband consulting services agreement with Sand Strategies. That you guys need to talk about and decide if you're gonna prove it or not.
I read it on, Mike emailed it to me, but I think you emailed it to me. But I couldn't. Just real quick, I want to read this.
Did you have an opportunity to look that one over?
I did, yes. I looked that over.
I think it's, uh, it's pretty important that we move forward with our broadband initiative, pretty, pretty rapidly. Uh, there's a little over a billion dollars of broadband money that's gonna come through the state. Most of it in competitive grants. There'll be some formula grants, but most of it's gonna be competitive. I think we need to be in a position to take advantage of those grants and, and get high-speed broadband deployed, uh, through the county. We've already allocated some funds for grant matches.
Right.
Uh, anyway, uh, the problem is those of us that are part of the broadband initiative all have day jobs and none of us have much expertise in grant writing, applications, and so forth. Uh, Mr. Sands, who is in the, uh, in the audience, if you have questions, uh, has been working with...
Mike, please?
Uh, he's been working with Allen County and Wabash County. Uh, in fact, just landed a $25 million grant for Allen County. Uh, so I think if we have some help along those lines to get the right people at the table and, uh, the ability to, to, uh, find those grants and, and write the correct slant on the grant applications, uh, we ought to be able to, uh, be successful in getting some broadband out. So that was the, the idea of what you have in front of you.
I think I read the fee was 36,000?
Yeah, 3,000 a month. 3,000 a month.
Yeah, 'cause it can be terminated within 30 days, so I assume it would be a prorated contract at that point, correct?
There's a 30-day exit clause and, um, as far as like the ROI is, Commissioner said, um, Allen County, we've been able to secure $25 million for them, um, so far, and, um, $36,000 a year, I think that's a pretty good return on investment, um, there in Allen County. We have, but biggest thing is Commissioner Watson, uh, pointed to is there's 700 million to 1.1 billion dollars coming, um, for broadband from the federal infrastructure package that was passed. Um, and it's critical that local governments, um, are at the table with providers and securing those funds. Um, and their likely chance of local governments will also be direct recipients of that, and, um, working with providers to actually go after those grants and apply for those grants is critical, and bringing those stakeholders to the table as far as the ag community, the healthcare community, education community, and, um, just business owners and private residents as well.
We were gonna fund this from the ARPA funds, correct?
Yes.
That we already agreed to.
Yeah, that's a match.
I'm good with it. I'd make a motion that we...
For those usually 80, 20 grants.
So every, uh, grant's a little bit different, so that there's quite a few different grants, opportunities out there. So the NLC program, that's the Indiana State Program, that they'll likely take from the feds and dump into the state program. And there's also other programs out there that, um, you guys aren't leveraging as much either. So there's also the Indiana Connectivity Program that allows individual residents and businesses actually to apply for those grants too. So it's really creating a toolkit and a one-stop shop for your guys' broadband deployment efforts. So I'm sure you guys get hit up by plenty of your constituents saying, hey, what are you guys doing about broadband? What resources are out there? Even schools too. So it's really putting those resources out there, um, that residents and businesses just don't even know about that are available out there, and making sure that they're aware of them, and then helping them actually apply for them as well.
There's a lot of farms out there that have grain silos that they run off their, you know, their, their, um, drying, and they'd like to have that connectivity. The, a lot of people are homeschooling now and doing broadband homeschool.
Telehealth.
Yeah, telehealth, all that. So it's, it's definitely a worthwhile project.
And when it comes to applying for those grants, it's very important. We make our case too with all those different stakeholders, and they actually, when we go in for the grant, we have a, you know, essentially an explanation on how this supports agriculture, how this supports, um, you know, telehealth, how it supports education. Um, so all that is very important to getting all those right stakeholders to the table.
Hey.
I'll, uh, I'll second Todd's motion for approval.
Yep.
Any motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Glad to have you on board.
Thanks, Zach.
Give us 20 million at least.
Um, I'd also sent a, um, draft copy of a press release on the FCC map challenges. Just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with the wording on that.
Yep.
Uh, we've only got a really limited window to be able to do those FCC challenges before...
Well, those are dubious at best. They're, they're...
The FCC maps, they're horrible.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they'll tell you you got broadband, you have no, you ain't close.
But the, but the, but the challenges that were, that this press release refers to is going a long way to correct all of that misinformation in the map.
Right, right.
So if we can get that out into the, in the public and, uh, uh, have everybody, or as many people as can participate, that'll be helpful.
I will send it for advertisement and put it on county website.
Okay, thank you.
Good deal. Next.
Um, I have the, this I'm not sure we're ready for. The memorandum of recommendation for the GM development and FCI construction for the highway, but I don't think we have all the other option, do we?
Not ready for that.
We're not.
So...
Premature.
Scratch that.
As much as they liked him.
And then the only other thing I have that came today, and I gave you guys copies, is, um, Indiana Power, Michigan, they need access, two access permits granted to two properties that you guys own, um, because they're going to be upgrading power grids. It's a Fort Wayne-Hicksville transmission line project.
Totally.
So two of the properties are owned by you guys, so if you want to grant them permission, then you need to motion and have Bill sign to allow that.
Certainly think we ought to give them access to upgrade the infrastructure. They don't want to buy any additional land from us, right, or as far as they just need access to upgrade what's there?
They want the right to trim and cut vegetation if necessary for their surveying purposes.
Looks like it's just surveying, right?
Yeah, most of it...
That's what this is about, I read.
Yeah, this is, that's the beginning of it. It's just permission to survey.
I don't think that's any line or pole placement. I don't think it's placing, any placement of poles or anything.
If you want to specify special conditions that you don't want them to do or you want them to do, you can. I tried to print you guys a little map so you could see. They're teeny-tiny little...
Unless there were special trees there that you didn't want cut down or something, it looks okay to me.
Yeah, I, I don't see any problem with it.
Your motion?
That'd be my motion, that we allow, is Indiana, Michigan power or AEP? Same thing, but...
A, yeah.
AEP.
Either way.
Well, I, well, same conglomerate, right? Yeah, same conglomerate.
Yeah, this is Indiana, Michigan.
Yeah.
IMP.
Um, make a motion to allow them access to the property for surveying and trimming if they need to.
Second.
Any motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. I will sign.
Okay. Who has my minutes?
Pass them to the rate on there.
Okay.
And upside down.
And upside down.
Give him the top line.
All right, that's all I had on the...
That's all you got?
That's all I got.
Ah, jeez. Okay, miscellaneous topics. Todd, anything?
I don't have anything.
Mike?
Everything I had.
Well, had one thing, just one thing. We got some tire hose out on the county farm, and there's two of them that need some tire replaced. They're not big, it's not a big project.
Drainage tiles?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Drainage tile. And, uh, we need to fix those. Uh, Tom Keller, a couple years ago, said he was gonna fix them, but he never did. So he, he began about getting them fixed. I went out and looked at them. Just need to put some tile in there and cover them up and just kind of fix it, so...
Is that where the blowout was? Is that where the blowout was?
Yeah, yeah. And it's been there a while.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyway, just the consensus to hire maybe Kelly Castman to come in and fix those. That works.
Yeah, I agree to that.
Okay. Probably a day job. Kind of gets the tile, moves in, moves out.
Let's get her done.
Probably have a day in it.
You want to take bids on that, or...
Wouldn't have to.
No, I mean, do you want any bids? Cause I know there's some...
It's not, it's not that.
It's not that much, cause I, there's some new players in the next game.
And Kelly Truitt is...
Contacted me.
Kelly Truitt is really good on the, uh, on the corn crib, so...
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Boy, they can do drainage work. Have him get ahold of the surveyors.
Well, he can. That's what he, that's what he specializes in.
Yeah, have him go get ahold of surveyors.
He did the airport work out there.
Or hurting, or contractors.
Yeah, and it's private tile, so it's not under the surveyor.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I had. All right. Moving along pretty swiftly here. Okay, at this time, we will open the meeting to the public for a solar discussion. Uh, some of the criteria is going to be, we'll start in, with those in favor of solar. Uh, comments limited to five minutes each with a 30-minute time limit total. And next...
Per side.
Per side.
Per side, yeah.
Yeah, per side. And following that, then we have those not in favor of solar with five minutes apiece, 30-minute total. And then we'll do a five-minute pro and, uh, or four and, uh, in favor and, uh, not in favor, uh, back and forth. Do some of that a little bit. There's some rebuttal or whatever. Might be, uh, one thing we want to do, want to get it out of here by, when it, three, or 8:15, want to get everybody out of the courthouse by 8:30. Get the courthouse, so, uh, security can, can do their walkthrough and, and close things up. So that's the goal, is to vacate the courthouse by 8:30. So we will start with, uh, those in favor of solar. Now's your chance to speak up, come up to the podium and state your name and address and, uh, say what you have to say. In favor of? Anybody out, outside?
I'm not in favor of solar.
Here. You like?
Yeah, sorry. Um, personally invited landowners here who are in favor of solar. One thing I would like to see happen is that we all remember we're a part of the same county, even though we have different views and opinions. Um, it might be intimidating talking in front of people who might not agree with you. Um, my hope is that we can have conversations that are civil and productive and respective, respectful of each other, so we can hear what everyone has to say and make choices that are best for the county as a whole. I just, I want to reiterate, um, I understand it's intimidating, but we've, we've asked people on both sides to come, so I want them to feel welcome.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, I'll call again for anyone in favor, and feel free to speak your mind, and you have five minutes.
Okay. My name is Lisa Hauser. Our, um, I'm, my husband and I, Rick, reside at 5350, County Road 40 in Butler. And we are glad to have this opportunity to share with you our thoughts in regards to the Thalassa Solar Farm Project that's being developed in DeKalb County. We are, have been willing to purchase participants in this project. No individual or company has forced us to participate. There are several reasons why we feel it is beneficial to this, for the solar farms, and I would like to address a couple of these at this time. Looking out for DeKalb County and what will benefit the county should be the number one priority of our governing bodies. The solar farms will provide for additional tax revenue for DeKalb County. With the thoughts of building projects on the horizon, infrastructure and drainage that needs addressed, and road projects that need handled, among other issues, additional ways to fund these ventures need to be looked at and considered. Several years ago, the potential for wind farms was looked at in the northern part of the county. Those were not allowed to be developed, so the county lost out on potential revenue with that, um, opportunity. Could there be co, um, companies who are looking at DeKalb County as a potential site? But when they see how the situation is being handled, will they look somewhere else that is more welcoming to establish their businesses? There have been statements made that solar farms will be using valuable farm ground. When farm ground is vacated for housing developments, industries, or other reasons, many times nothing is said. The owner of the farm ground made a decision to sell their ground and the new purpose went forward. We may not like the fact that this happened, but we are not the owners of the ground and technically it's none of our business. Having been a lifetime farmer and farmed this ground, it's been our decision what to do with our ground. Those that have worked in the private sector most likely have some type of retirement. However, this farm ground is our retirement. It can now work for us. It has not been anyone's decision but our own to get involved with a Thalassa solar farm. The envi, the environmental aspect is also something to be considered. Solar energy is a clean energy. Having the SDI complex in our area of which we hear daily and occasionally smell, the solar farm project will be quiet and shouldn't admit anything. It's been brought to our attention that solar panels come from China. One thing that we've learned in this process is that the solar panels for the Thalasso project will be American-made and in fact, near Perrisburg, Ohio. We have nothing against those in opposition to the solar farms. These person has the right to their own view, just like we do. However, we are wondering where some of the information has come from and if they are sharing factual information. The no solar farms in DeKalb County signs that we've been seeing in the northern part of the county, these residents will not be near the solar farms, nor will they be part of their everyday life. It's important that there be some forward thinking so that down the road, DeKalb County doesn't run out of revenue to keep things moving. No one wishes to have their taxes increased, but the question needs to be addressed as to where will additional revenue come from. Thank you for this opportunity to share you, with you, our views.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'm Melvin Stury from 6219 State Road 1, St. Joe, and I'm a landowner. I grew up on a farm in, uh, helping Dad and Mom all my life there, and, uh, shortly out of high school there, getting married, I had an opportunity to buy this farm in 1974, 48 years ago. And, uh, nobody's told me what to do with it for 48 years. And, uh, now, uh, I had that opportunity to buy the farm. At the same time, the people I went to school with, uh, they went to college or trade school to increase their income for a higher, higher-up job, and I cho, I chose to buy a farm, you know, and, uh, the opportunity is here today for me to increase my income in retirement, uh, just like everybody else. Uh, I know for a fact that, uh, in the last three years, there's a lot of people, and some in this room, that have switched jobs to get a higher income, uh, which I can't do farming, you know. I gotta take what I get. And, uh, there, there's some going to school to get a $100 an hour job, going to graduate from college, you know. And, uh, and I got, uh, I got this opportunity for my retirement. And, uh, now, uh, at this time, I have a lot of family members, and I got people that are 10, 20 mile away that are telling me what to do inside my property lines. And, and I'm not on their property. And, uh, uh, there, there's signs up across the road... there, there's signs up across the road, uh, farm the land and feed the people. And, uh, there already is a nation shortage in electricity. And, uh, in the future, there, there, the coal is being shut down. I've been to Kentucky and seen the coal mines closed, all the people suffering there. Uh, the fracking is being shut down, that's part of the, uh, electric income. And, uh, nuclear plants are getting old, and they got a time limit on them too, to shut down. And, uh, so something's got to replace this electric if we're going to feed the people, like the sign says. Or, uh, or even heat your shop or have lights. Uh, it's a good chance for DeKalb County to, to participate. And, uh, the comment was made that, uh, solar goes on, online. Uh, it, it goes far away, well, it don't. If, if it goes online and you turn on your light, it's in this area, it'll come to you, you know? Uh, the, uh, your, uh, LP gas, your natural gas, and when you fill your car up with gas, you have no idea where it came from. It was kind of on a line too. Uh, it's coming on a ship or come from Texas. It, it very likely didn't come from DeKalb County. So you got the same situation there, is online with the electric. And, uh, the last thing here, if, uh, if I put up a hog barn, like happened in Ohio on, on, uh, uh, 249, there's all kinds of signs went up, no hog barns. Uh, you know, how are you going to feed the people without the hog barns? Now, today in Steuben County, they're trying to put up a cattle barn, but the Hamilton Lake is shutting them down or trying to. Uh, uh, they're protesting that, you know? And, uh, you know, how are you going to feed the people without electricity and food? All I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of solar? Like to speak?
Lynn Reinhardt, 4224 County Road 71, Butler, Indiana. I'm a landowner and farmer in eastern DeKalb County. And as I thought about what I wanted to talk about tonight, I decided that some of the most important information for everyone to consider is to look at where we have came from, how we got there, and where we are today. We have already been through this process once. Uh, just recalling, the process began when the commissioners put on a moratorium until an ordinance could be adopted by the county because they, um, realized that there was activity, um, starting to, to happen, uh, with contacts from solar companies with landowners. Um, commissioners had a public meeting, uh, after that, August the 4th at 6:00 PM in the evening, I believe. Um, a second special meeting was held at the Milli Hansen Auditorium at Eastside High School, August 17th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. We've heard a lot of people complain that there's been no evening meetings and opportunities for, for people to participate. There were plenty of opportunities when this went through the process the first time. Um, after that meeting at Eastside, uh, with the, some of the commissioners and plan commission members there, Chris Gommer had, uh, solicited people to email questions, uh, to him, and that he would compile those and answers to them, uh, which he did. Those were dis- distributed to anyone or available online. Uh, then, uh, plan commission met on September 15th or 16th and, uh, voted on a favorable recommendation to the ordinance that they had prepared after much public participation and discussion. The commissioners subsequently, at their meeting on September the 27th, uh, came back with some proposed amendments, uh, to that ordinance, which was then taken back to the plan commission. And at their first meeting, they decided to, uh, delay their vote on those amendments for a week so that they had time to, to review it. Um, all these are public meetings that anyone could have been a part of. Uh, so then they met the following week on October 6th. Uh, came to the decision of not to accept the amendments that the commissioners had proposed. So then it went back to the commissioners at their October 11th meeting. I believe there were some additional amendments or changes to those original amendments at that time, but it was ultimately passed unanimously. And that's what created the current commercial solar energy system overlay that we have today. What the landowners and the companies have been operating on the premises of that was the rules of DeKalb County. As I said, these meetings were all public, covered by the, the Star Newspaper. Even on the Stop Solar DeKalb Facebook page. Yet, after Skolpin EDF called on neighbors of the project, something that a lot of other people had complained that they didn't have conversations with anyone and everything was kept secret. Far from the truth, this company knocked on doors to talk to the people. That is what brought us to where we are today. Because when they knocked on somebody's door and they found out that the solar field project was most likely, or potentially at least, across the road from them or beside of them, they took a lot more interest in it than what they did before. We have to realize that this ordinance was developed with all of DeKalb County in mind. It can't be looked at to fit individuals' needs. Uh, another issue that cannot be ignored is property rights. And I think that's a major factor in deciding the path forward. I've heard discussion about true property rights. And as I consider true property rights in its simplest form, that would be the elimination of all zoning requirements. Some people might laugh, but there are 10 counties in Indiana that have no zoning ordinances. Also, the state of Texas prohibits counties the right to have zoning with very few expressly granted exceptions. A thing that I look at from my standpoint is one of the things that's critical to the location of these solar farms is the electric transmission lines. Uh, the big steel towers that you see. Uh, those are owned by I&amp;M or AEP. Uh, I'm fortunate enough, I guess, to say that I have those that cross three farms of mine. And when they replaced the first one, which is called the Hicksville-Butler Transmission Line, I didn't have any problems or issues with it. Those poles were there when my father or I bought the farm, so we was aware of it at the time. After the construction of that, though, within a year or two, they knocked on the door again, and they were gonna connect that line and run, um, to connect from the Butler-Hicksville Transmission Line to the line that had run out by the SDI complex. I.
One minute, Lynn.
Okay. I had no say in that happening. Uh, you can have some discussion for, with them for a little while. Then you get the letter in the mail that if you did not resolve the issue uh, in a certain time period, they will be contacting their legal staff and begin the proceedings for eminent domain. Uh, this is a picture of my property, just off of State Road 1. Has three, well, actually four of the transmission towers. One was from the original line. Three that's been installed, connecting that line, running over to State Road 1. So I had no, no say in that. Take what they ultimately allow you, give you. We understand the process of eminent domain and the need for that. It's to provide services for the good of the community. We, as a landowner, sacrifice for the good of the community. That electricity serves the city of Butler. It serves SDI and all of those surrounding facilities. So maybe you work there, maybe your neighbor works there, maybe your spouse works there. It's important to everyone. And then to think that people want to say that we don't have the right to lease or sell to a solar developer, and us to have the opportunity to profit from the sacrifices that we made. I mean, these are something that's there, we have to farm around them every year. Um, if we were to damage them, we are liable. So besides that, I mean. So I, I thank you for your time and, uh, look forward to further discussion.
Excellent. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else in favor?
Forgot to sign in. Uh, Ben Sturrie, uh, 5591, County Road 75A. Um, I'm a participating landowner. Uh, I don't think my property is going to be used, uh, for this project, and I'm okay with that. Uh, about four years ago, we got approached by BP. Uh, it took us about a year and a half to sign on with the project. We used some local lawyers, went through it, and we felt happy and comfortable with them. Uh, they have been very transparent, and they've tried to be transparent with people by knocking on doors, having open meetings, um, to explain to the public. Uh, in their presentations, they've, they've answered a lot of the issues, uh, with grazing. They've answered the issues of buffers that the county set back for them. Uh, they've tried, uh, with some good neighbor agreements of giving to people. Um, far as tax revenue on the BP project is looking at it over 20 million in tax revenue with no job losses on the BP project. All the farmers, there's no one that's going to give up a job or lay anybody off because of 630-some acres going into this project. It's not, there's 1,205 acres, gross and nets, 635 acres for this project. Out of that 635 acres, there's 200 acres that probably hasn't been farmed but a couple of years. It's been in set aside, a program that the government pays us not to farm it. Why? Because it's highly erodible. Um, don't know the history of the whole program. It has something to do with Lake Erie and the watersheds. Uh, you'll see a lot of the river properties, they pay us not to farm along the river. There's, you can get a buffer strips, uh, keeps the chemicals from going into the, into the river filters. So, uh, the ground of about 200 acres, I would say in production, the last, we had some of ours is in production. Um, probably about five, six years is the most 200 acres have been in production. Two of the farms, I never remember seeing them in production. Um, I would guess I was probably 10, 11 before we farmed them last. Uh, I know the loss of income uh, has been brought up. The only really loss would be to probably John Deere, Monsanto, and Pioneer. They're national companies, they're corporate. But that extra money staying in the area, in the farmers' pockets. We're not having to shell it out. Uh, land isn't a co-op. You own your land. It's, it's not a partnership with everybody else. I won't tell anybody what to do with their property, and don't tell me what to do with mine. So I do with my neighbors, I do respect their thoughts. I won't ever hold anything against them. Uh, that don't change anything with me. I just don't expect to be told how to, how to, what to do with my investment. Because that's what it is, it's our investments. I want to log it as I please. If I want to sell it off for houses, I'm going to sell it off for houses. If I want to sell to a factory, I'm going to sell it to a factory. So, um, some of the other things, uh.
One minute.
We don't own our view.
One minute.
Thank you. We don't own our view across the, across the stakes. That's not promised to us. I, uh, I don't control what my neighbor's house looks like, I don't control what new houses look like. Um, there is some ordinances and set for some of that stuff. But, uh, when I bought my property, I bought between my stakes, I didn't buy outside of my stakes. Uh, one of the other big things, I'm not saying solar is going to fix everything. Be, you know, in 30 years, this is going to be a return to farm ground. That's why we signed on. 30 years, it's back to farm ground. That's all along diverse in their tax spread. You're not just into trailers or into steel mills or anything, you got a lot more diversity. Uh, the other thing for the farmers, we didn't sign all of our ground up. We want to be diverse, we want to have a little bit here, a little bit there. It makes for a consistent paycheck. There is a couple of families that, that's all they have is farm ground. So, uh, the other one, last comment. Uh, if people really want to stop the solar stuff, they need to stop supporting the companies that support solar. They need to stop supporting Facebook. They're the number three in the nation for the solar projects. Amazon, Twitter, all them companies are buying all the power. So if you want to stop it, give that stuff up, start and lead. It's kind of like we go back to the China stuff. Everybody here has stuff in, made in China. So, uh, I don't support China, but unfortunately, we wear stuff. Um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sandra Carnahan, and I live at 4710 County Road 55, Auburn. And I did sign up my farm as well, um, to BP. Um, a couple of years ago, we signed on and, um, at the time, it sounds like a great idea. I'm, I'm kind of with Mr. Sturrie, I, if it doesn't show up, that's fine too, we're not living on that money. But, um, I just would like to say, I'd love to have seen this crowd in 1994 when my husband and I bought that farm from the Howard Grimm Estate and was going to just farm out in the middle of nowhere. And they threw a steel mill right across the road from me. I mean, I had 800 acres to look at every night, every day. It's lit up, it's noisy, it's not anything we ever planned on, but our county commissioner thought that was a great idea. We took, Ellen Graver just took us to the woodshed with that. And anyway, I just want to say, thanks for your help on that one, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor?
Um, I'm Lisa Reinhardt, 4224 County Road 71, Butler. I don't know if I can say I'm in favor, but I think I have some information I'd like to share. Um, I was a chemist at Lilly for almost 18 years, so if you want to talk about the tellurium and what that means, I'm happy to have that conversation outside of here. Okay, so just know that that's not, that's, that's not a problem at all, I'm not, not worried about it, but I'm happy to have that conversation. I'm here because, most importantly, I have been a substitute teacher at DeKalb Eastern for the last 14 years, which is kind of a, a unique job, because it puts me in our school system with our kids. And I've had an opportunity to fulfill most of the long-term maternity leave job. I think you would agree with that, in our school system, mostly from a science perspective, because I'm a chemist, okay? So I have been in those classrooms where we have taught our children the importance of reducing our carbon footprint. And where we have taught our children the importance of diversifying our energy needs. We've taught them through our curriculum about solar. We've taught them through our curriculum about solar and wind and nuclear and fossil fuels. We've taught them that. Now, as a teacher, you never know for sure if the kids get it or not, let's be honest, right? Sometimes they're sleeping around their phones, right? But I had an opportunity at the Butler Days Fall Festival to have a student where we were volunteering at the local festival. I had a student say, why are those people over there with stop solar signs? I thought that solar was something we were supposed to do. Now, that puts us all in an interesting position, at least it did me, okay? Because I am also a landowner, actually, I look at my husband, he's the landowner, I'm just a transplant, let's be honest here, okay? My name might be on some of the land, but we don't have anything signed up, seriously. In conversations, yes, but there's no land contract that we have for anything, just conversations, okay? To be completely transparent, just conversations, all right? But, but it put me in an awkward spot because there I was as the teacher who had taught some of these kids that information, trying to explain why solar is a good idea but not in DeKalb County. So I did that because I do that dance all the time with these kids, okay? I just do. I'm not one to say, well, these guys are just against solar and they don't. I, I didn't do it that way, folks, because that's not how I operate as a substitute teacher, it just isn't, okay? But that is the generation that's coming up and that is what we are teaching them. Right or wrong, I can have that conversation with you outside of here as well, okay? I can give you my scientific opinion when it comes to solar and the efficiency and if it's the way to go. I'm happy to share that with you too. This is not the place. But I need you guys to think through all of that. You have done your due diligence, maybe, I mean, I don't know, I'm not a commissioner, I don't know what all you need to think through to make these decisions. But you did make a decision and we're fighting, some of us are fighting against that, okay? Now, I, I don't know if I have a minute, okay, just a minute, okay? But, so if I don't, I can cut this off, but I do want to say this one thing, okay? It seems to me like I was kind of shooting myself in the foot by sharing that story with you, okay? Because at the end of the day, what I want to stand up here and say is, I think property rights are property rights. I don't want somebody coming to me and saying, you have to plant a grove of maple trees on your farm because we're short on maple syrup. I don't, and I don't want somebody to come to you and say, you have to cut down all your maple trees because we need corn. Ultimately, my personal opinion is property rights are property rights and we should be able to do that. The other part is just a detraction, seriously, which is what you keep hearing lots of other people do to you as well. It's a detraction from what the real issue is. I, if, if we got a signed contract, I would have solar right across from my house, right across the road from my house, if that ever even happened, okay? But I should have a right, actually not me, my husband should have a right to say what he gets to do with his land. It's his land. So thanks for taking that time to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? We've got two minutes.
Robert Glick, I own property on County Road fifty, between fifty and forty-eight. And everybody's talking about not being able to feed the people. Yields of grain has almost doubled in the last forty years. So we're, we're, we're processing more grains, which will feed the people. Nothing has been said about all the county roads that are now gravel in DeKalb County, of which will be paved by the solar people once they leave. Everybody's concerned about dust in front of their farms, their homes. That'll all subside. Our taxes will go down because of the infrastructure. Enough said.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, we're at the thirty-minute mark, so I will call now for anyone who is not in favor of solar.
Okay, Jessica Shaw, Butler, Indiana. I'm going to give up a few seconds of my time here. I actually read an article last night where KPC covered the meeting that was held at Eastside High School, and it said that fifty people showed up and not one person spoke in favor of solar. It also noted that more people left with questions than they had answers, yet the process moved on, which is really why we're here, okay? So I'm going to start with saying, I stand here kind of ashamed to say that up until the last three months, I've lived in this bubble free of politics, never do it again, now that I'm informed. The benefit of that is I've been sheltered from pork barrel politics where relationships between businessmen and government are what determines success, not the free market. What we are witnessing unravel in DeKalb County is bigger than landowner rights. It's like something I've only ever seen in movies. I'm not a conspiracy theorist, I'm not, I promise. I've always trusted our government to make decisions that are in the best interest of the general public, not their political agendas. So I stand before you asking you to be the leaders that we elect you to be. I'm asking you to look out for the best interest of the entire county because that is your job. But most importantly, I'm asking you to see solar for what it is. Biden's woke green energy agenda that's create independence on foreign countries. Allowing the federal government to get involved in energy transfers billions of dollars from, to the production and consumption of politically preferred sources. Energy subsidies are nothing more than a form of blatant corporate welfare where the government gives tax breaks and special treatment to corporations. It literally chooses winners and losers. Our economy is meant to run on free enterprise because eliminating favoritism in markets benefits all Americans, businesses and individuals alike, not just a privileged few. Although we currently do have elected officials in DeKalb County that call truths about green energy horror stories and refuse to entertain the idea that these stories are actually happening, I'm going to ask you to bear with me for a second and take a look at what happens when we let the government's agenda and the government's corporate welfare help guide our decisions at the county level. The Institute for Energy Research stated that the German people are up in arms about energy. Energy, a commodity that affects our everyday life, our clothes, our transportation, our entertainment, our food, even our medical treatment. For Germans, electricity prices are soaring as a result of phasing out energy, are phasing out nuclear power and mandating renewable energy. Electricity prices are soaring as a result of mandating renewable energy. Consumers in Germany are facing the biggest electricity price increase in a decade and those creases are going to continue. Consumer groups are complaining that eight hundred thousand German households can no longer pay for their energy bills. There is proof that these things are happening, yet we keep assuming we are free from the consequences of our choices in DeKalb County and continue to be told these are nothing more than horror stories. Let's take a look at another example that's a little closer to home in California. The Los Angeles Times released an article stating that the Public Utilities Commission in California voted to slash incentives and payments for rooftop solar, residential solar that goes on your home. The decision was made, and I'm going to quote this so you know it's not my words, because non-solar households have been forced to pay higher bills as a result of known as net metering, okay? For the public who doesn't know what net metering is, this is simply where, it's a program that's offered by a utility company, you put solar on your house, Ken, and if you produce more energy or power than you use, you get credits for that surplus, right? But there's huge disadvantages to that. Shocker. It makes electricity pricier for homes that don't generate their own power. Those utility companies have to manage that inefficient power that's sent to the grid. That comes in the form of new transmission lines, transformers, equipment, things like that. They also incur costs and a loss of profits by having to pay for that surplus that they're getting. That cost has to be absorbed by someone. We don't want it to be, but it does, and that ends up being the citizens in DeKalb County. So would you like to tell me again that these thousands of acres of solar panels will not increase the cost of electricity to the citizens? And keep in mind, we're talking industrial-scale solar, we're not against solar, we're against industrial-scale solar pushed by the government's agenda. While we may, while my main concern is fighting for DeKalb County, this process has opened my eyes to the real war here, our country's independence. If you want to control a nation, control their energy and control their food source. If we allow solar to come to our county in the way that they are wanting to, we are letting foreign developers control our energy, limit our food source, and allowing a foreign national government to go as far as owning land in DeKalb County.
One minute.
Commissioners, I trust, I'm almost done. I trust that after you hear from the citizens of DeKalb County, who count on you to protect them, okay? You will do what is right and slow solar down. You will give yourself time to make informed decisions on whether or not thousands of acres of solar fields is worth or beneficial to the forty thousand-plus citizens in DeKalb County. That's it.
Thank you.
Ryan Hoover, thirty-nine, thirty-five, County Road seventy-five. I want to start by telling everyone how we permit land usage in DeKalb County, how we tell people what they can and can't do with their property. There's been a lot of people saying, it's my land, I'll do what I want. That's absolutely not true. I have to get a permit for my house, I have to get a permit for my septic, and it's all right in here, all three hundred and seventy pages of the DeKalb County Unified Development Ordinance. This document legally states the rules and regulations that every landowner has the right when they own property in DeKalb County. I repeat, the legal, it states the legal rights and regulations everyone has that protects themselves and their neighbors. This means that as long as we abide by the rules and regulations, we can do anything we want with our property. So when can we not? I purchased my farm after looking up all the properties around me, they're all zoned, agricultural or residential. After reading through the ag zoning, I had the understanding that I could only, that all that land around me could only be used for agricultural use. That's great, we love that, that's why we bought it. We love tractors, combines, animals, we love farmers, we love farms. Now, I know what some people are going to say, solar farms, no. That's just a name created by solar companies trying to persuade people into thinking they're so fabulous, so green, yet so black. They're utility scale or industrial energy generation. I repeat, utility scale or industrial. During my research in the UDO, nowhere did it tell me that solar would be allowed anywhere near me. In fact, I had to read ninety-one pages in this, until solar's brought up, ninety-one pages. This is why, this is way past the point of knowing what's allowed around my property. You know what the best part is? We created an overlay. This overlay isn't even listed in Article One, Section fifteen, Overlay District, it's not even in there. Why an overlay district? I've heard it stated multiple times here, right in here, that everyone is doing it, so why not us? Six of the twenty-four counties in northern Indiana have done it, and that includes DeKalb, that's us. According to the Indiana Citizens Planner Guide, Chapter Eight, overlay districts are clearly meant to support, to further restrict areas and not to allow extra access. For example, the airport layover. If you haven't heard of it, you should look it up. It's exactly what it does, it protects the pilots, the passengers and the houses around By creating a silver overlay, the district has done only fast-track solar into our county and almost any zones. There's no cap, don't forget that, no cap. So just because your neighbor has a sign and it's not by a solar farm, that doesn't mean in thirty years or, and next year, there's not going to be a solar farm by you. No one is safe, what's that do to our future? I want to know, how is this legal? I have to play by the same rules and regulations as everyone else in this county. Why is it solar gets a pass? What makes them different? Where's the steel overlay off of County Road fifty-nine? They literally have billion-dollar companies and create thousands of jobs, but they're all zoned industrial. Why isn't solar get the overlay still? Is it because they can ruin our land, our rights, or because they could possibly bring special money to our county? This brings me to my next point. When does money mean more to the county than my family's safety? Under the ordinance, I'm given a number of rights, and I'm only going to list a few, these are the easy ones, if you want to find the real ones, you can dig yourselves. Article One, Section Two clearly states in basic provisions, I have the right to adequate light, air, safety from fire and other dangers. I've asked numerous times for a fire plan, got nothing. I showed Homeland Security a major flaw in our fire station layout and have got nothing. Solar panels are a fire danger, the entire project is a fire danger, yet my basic right to safety from fires being ignored. Also, my right to air and light will be obstructed by thousands of eighteen-foot solar panels standing high in these fields, and yet the solar panels are eighteen-foot, but let's not forget, they all stand about four foot off the ground. I guess I don't get my sunrise anymore. I'm sorry, everyone, you don't get your legal right to a sunset. Don't worry about that nice summer breeze, it's gone. We've heard a lot of, we'll do this, we'll do that with regards to roads, fires and vegetative barriers. We cannot say it enough, if it's not in the ordinance, it does not exist. Also, I want to state, why would I forfeit my four hundred foot setback to two hundred foot so I could get a couple pine trees and tall grass? I can do that on my own and I can probably do way better than they'll ever do it. Has anyone ever seen how fast a pine tree or dry grass catches fire? Are you trying to put my family in danger closer to these solar panels? This overlay is destroying my life, costing me thousands of dollars now, who knows what more, obstructing my legal right to live within our UDO, this book here, and most importantly, putting my family's safety at risk. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Allison Carnahan and I live at seventy-three, ninety-five, County Road sixty-four. As a lifelong DeKalb County resident, I'm very proud of this community and the quality of life this county offers. One of the keys to this quality of life has been respect and collaboration, showing respect to our neighbors, family and friends through treating each other as you would want to be treated. It's civility, being aware of your neighbor, treating each other as you would want to be treated. Owning property doesn't give you a magic card to disregard rules, regulations and processes. We must ensure awareness and protection of our neighbors and the community around us. This is civility at its primary level. But within civility, we also have laws and regulations that govern and oversee the rights of citizens throughout this country, state and our county. I am thankful that we can decide on solar at a local level, and I hope by deciding on it at a local level, we can protect our culture that we're all invested in and that proves us to be DeKalb County and be unique from so many around us in so many ways. With that being said, we also have to do this and follow procedures that are fair and equitable to the treatment of all community members regardless of what land you own. Seemingly with solar, the process is full of exceptions. As Ryan referenced, the UDO, the overlay districts were meant to restrict development further. Additionally, the best practices referenced in the Indiana Community Planning Guide say that these districts serve as an additional layer of regulation in areas that are particularly sensitive. An appropriate overlay is an underlying zone, has an underlying zoning district that does not change, and there are generally more requirements, not less, placed on the land. The overlay was added to the UDO to help fast-track the ability of solar companies to access agricultural land in our county, but not just agricultural land, they can access anything unless you are a park or an open space. So unless you're Ricky Park, Maxton's Park or hopefully Eckert Park, you may not be safe from solar. But solar is commercial energy. Commercial energy is industrial. Commercial, not commercial, industrial. DeKalb County, oops, hang on. DeKalb County intends to tax solar companies at an industrial rate. Would that then imply that they're an industry? An industry attempting to create energy to serve those outside our community with no direct benefit to our land or citizen. So why not create an exception? Why should the government not follow the rules when it doesn't suit them as long as they can get more funds? If we remove the overlay and we use the UDO in place, which would be the correct zoning process, it adds public hearing for public comment, it would review the best land use, it will assess if it fits within the comprehensive plan. However, the creation of the overlay removes all of this. It fast-tracks the solar industry into a position that no industry has seen previously in this county. And frankly, I'll be even more concerned if we continue to see industries that see fast-tracks like this in our future. In twenty thirteen, the industry, the industrial wind would have loved a type of welcome like this, but the citizens, with the help of the county, stopped the industrial misplacement of this in agricultural areas. In nineteen ninety-six, SDI would have welcomed an overlay with fewer restrictions, but we did the right thing. We made an industrial zone. SDI has zoned high-intensity industry. We didn't make an overlay in case the steel mill didn't make it and the farmer wanted to farm it again in thirty years. We followed the process, we allowed input, we acknowledged nuisance laws, and we allowed them to examine if things went wrong, how would we handle it? We ensured emergency management and we thought it through. We took our time. Seeing the zoning process has been in place since nineteen sixty-four with the DeKalb County Zone with the DeKalb County zoning ordinance, our county has seen growth in population and industry by following the process. Hence, we must believe that the ordinance in place to identify proper zoning works. The comprehensive plan has been in place since 2017, and the plan's purpose is to provide a community vision and implementation manual for the future success of DeKalb County. For solar alone, we make an exception and yield to all previous planning. I urge our commissioners, counselors, and others to slow down. Look at the long-term impact of this overlay, industrial solar in our county. Does it benefit a select few while replacing or eliminating many others? Does it achieve goals within our comprehensive plan? Does it violate our comprehensive plan's strategy to minimize variances to ensure the continuity of development? Or does it just create more convenience for today and dollars? Be consistent, don't take a tax entity at one rate and then zone them at another. Please follow the rules that every other industry has to play by in this county and be fair. And we appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Colvin Stury, 4594, State Road 1. Let me start by saying I'm not against solar and renewable energy. What I am against is not doing it correctly. This is a decades-long commitment, commitments being made for those who are still children, commitments for those who are possibly not even born yet. It requires an educated approach, a careful consideration with a well-executed plan, an unbiased approach from leadership in collaboration with the citizens who this is directly affecting. One of our best sources of long-term protection lies within our ordinance. After learning about industrial solar's interest in DeKalb County, I attended my first commissioners' meeting back in May 2021. I spoke to our commissioners to find a way to protect us with an ordinance before control was taken away at the county level. The commissioners declared a 60-day moratorium on any solar applications while we established a way to protect all of our citizens. During this meeting, Chris Gahmer from our Plan Commission said the county said, "The county should craft," and I quote, "an ordinance shaped around the citizens." Also in this meeting, County Commissioner Todd Sanderson stated that solar is coming. Solar themselves have said they are coming, tax abatement or not. During this meeting, Mr. Sanderson also said, and I quote once more, "We need to protect the residents." On behalf of the youth of DeKalb County, we have a question. What do decisions being made today leave us with? Even though no one wants to talk about this, this is a concern for our environment over the next 30 years. I'm very involved in protecting my environment, yes, I'm a hunter, and yes, I'm a very responsible one. Indiana has protected species, who is protecting them? We aren't, we are overlooking it. The solar companies themselves admit research completed on these type of our product, of our projects, and the impact on environment and wildlife is not credible because it simply hasn't been here long enough to truly know. It is up to our county to protect all of it. We continue to shrink habitats in our county, and will continue to do so much faster with projects like these that includes extensive fencing throughout existing habitats. Fencing off 6,000 acres or more of our county will have a huge impact on our wildlife, and it will affect their natural migration, possibly even shoving them closer to our roadways. We need to increase setbacks, which will naturally provide decreased habitat containment. We need to put an overall cap on our land available for solar use. This is not only, this not only protects our environment for both citizens, but it also protects wildlife. Another concern I have is that for my safety for those I serve with, I'm a firefighter and a medical responder on the eastern side of the county. I volunteer with Concord Fire, and I'm a fire and EMT-certified firefighter. I have a great concern over the lack of required fire plan in the ordinance. It is not binding if it's not in there. We can't trust spoken promises. I want assurance of safety for my teams if the horror story of a fire ever occurs in one of these projects. I want a fire plan in the ordinance that is created in collaboration with the leaders of our local fire departments and giving us the equipment needed on day one to protect those and, those who serve and who are being served. That brings me to another concern, where does it end? There's already a land grab happening beyond the borders of this initial 6,000 acres. They are grabbing land under a new company and a new project name. They want to connect across our entire area. They need each other, they want as much as they can get. Without a cap now, it could continue to increase over the next 30 years. Who stops it? A verbal "no, it won't happen" doesn't hold up. We have to put safeguards in place in the ordinance proactively because we just don't know. As youth, we often hear our noses, we, as youth, we often hear that our noses are on our phones or we are in our video games, we don't go outside, we don't know how good we have it. We are being given a concrete playground that we aren't asking for. Industrial progression is not only shriveling the wildlife habitat, it's shriveling the habitat for the youth of our county. Children are a product of their environment, you reap what you sow, please protect what you have. Do we know, do we need to progress? Yes. Do we need to be responsible in doing so? Also, yes. These solar companies are giving their spiel's in communities all over our country. They didn't pick us because we are special, they picked us because they want our land. They don't care about us, they are here to steal the deal at any expense. And these are not farms. In closing, I would like to reference something that I found in my research yesterday. This article was just shared yesterday by the Circleville Herald, which is just south of Columbus, Ohio. Pickaway County Commissioners received a letter from EDF Renewables announcing they were no longer proceeding with the project. EDF Renewables is one of the companies who has already applied for a project in our area under the name Skolpin. They have already asked our county to abate their taxes. The project there was called Chipmunk Solar Project. Steve Garner, a citizen of the community opposed to the project, stated, "It's not a personal battle, it's that we, what we want to protect, that what we have." Here again, we want to protect what we have. He stated overall, the majority of the governing bodies had sided with the residents and supported the residents in their cause to protect. Why do we have leadership clearly siding with solar? Mr. Garner went on to state, "All the political entities that we had asked to support us did. The county commissioners, all the townships, city of Circleville, and they did so because they realized the impact they had on the community and that the risks are outweighed by the benefits." We need unbiased protection from our leadership, and now, and for the next 30 years, we should not sell out our county.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Brown, I live at 4446 State Road 1 Butler. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I would like to talk about the financial implications of tax abatements lost to local businesses and overall tax implications that could happen. The solar companies have stated they will come regardless of whether a tax abatement is granted. Why then would we leave money on the table? Does it make sense for the county to accept a fraction of what could be earned in taxes just to say we received an economic development payment? It makes more sense that we would get every available tax dollar out of these multi-billion-dollar companies who are owned by foreign countries instead of gifting them with a blind eye. Should local leaders choose to accept an economic development payment, how will the community members directly affected by the disruption of industrial solar be engaged in the use of these funds? Is it right that those dollars go anywhere other than the Butler community, which is where all of these projects are planned? I've heard officials say that it will be evenly distributed, but what does that mean? And what else is on the agenda for the local leaders? If the solar contracts with landowners are renegotiated, will the economic development payment also be renegotiated? What is the guarantee that if tax structures change, we are not going to lose out on more money than if they were taxed fully from the very beginning? My family has been in the agricultural business within DeKalb County for multiple generations. We currently farm roughly 1,500 acres of ground, all within DeKalb County. Much of that ground is farmed through cash rent. Every year, we lose a farm or two and gain a farm or two. It is fluid and ever-changing. However, by granting a tax abatement and allowing these solar, industrial solar to come, you are eliminating thousands of acres that would be available within our community to even have the opportunity to farm. As our acres decrease, so do our inputs and our outputs. This impacts not just my family, but those we use to keep our farm running. You are choosing to replace hard-working citizens, including our seed and fertilizer salesmen, agronomists, fuel companies, equipment and parts dealers, and the elevators who take our grain every fall. Yes, I have been told that a landowner can sell their land to a housing development, and that would take away farm ground as well. But you know what? I would gladly welcome families and engaged community members to participate than I would welcome metal and chemical panels that are lifeless and stagnant. Back to the conversation about loss. Not only will businesses be losing income, but there will also be a loss of personal property tax revenue. Farmers will decrease machinery to reduce overhead, which will decrease their property taxes paid. The equipment demands for the companies that support agriculture will also be decreased and reduce their property tax payments as well. Even businesses in Eden, Edgerton, and Hicksville, Ohio are concerned about the impact industrial solar will have on their communities across the state line. It is my understanding, no matter what is decided with industrial solar, whether they get an abatement or not, our tax base will be disrupted. Even though the assessed value of the county may go up, our county budget would need to remain the same should they receive an abatement. If they don't receive an abatement and still come to the community, most likely, we will see families leave and property values go down, so our tax rates increase. Whatever pet projects the council chooses to use the economic development monies for will most likely require more funds than what they are given and will need to have continued maintenance and upkeep over the years. That would need to be built into the county budget and could increase our taxes over time. Lastly, I leave you with the current situation occurring in Michigan regarding tax clawbacks by renewable energy companies. The state of Michigan changed their tax tables and accelerated the depreciation schedule for wind turbines after a project had been started by Consumer Energy. Because of the change of how they were taxed, Consumer Energy, who produces wind and solar, and made $7 billion last year, is suing numerous taxing entities, including the local school system. They are suing the local school system. The school system they are suing has 680 students, and they are attempting to claw back nearly $1.2 million from that school system. To put this in perspective, DeKalb Eastern Community School District has roughly 1,250 students. That's twice as many students. Can we afford to pay $2.4 million in disputed taxes? I would think not. Should the county put us in a situation where they could bankrupt our schools? I would certainly hope not, which is why we need to consider all factors around industrial solar. Not seeing just dollar amounts that could help us for a couple of pet projects, but its overall impacts to the community as a whole. Because these companies do not care about our communities, they care about the dollars. Thank you.
We have time for one more. You're the last go-round until we get to the rebuttals.
Lauren Brown, 4446, State Road 1 Butler. Good evening, everyone. Like I said, my name is Lauren Brown. I'm a 2021 graduate of Eastside High School. I now attend Purdue University studying animal sciences. I was a 10-year 4-H member, five-year FFA member, and serve as the reigning Misty Calb County. I have come before you tonight with many concerns regarding the proposed utility-scale solar projects that will surround my home and will surround the homes of my cherished neighbors and friends. The situation regarding solar projects has become quite concerning for my family and is challenging me on a very personal level. I am incredibly involved with my community and cherish the memories of my childhood in DeKalb County. The saying "home is where the heart is" rings true for me, and my heart is here with my loved ones. I have always planned to raise a family here and spend the rest of my days in this place that I call home. I aspire to become like the ladies and gentlemen at Old Settlers' Day who celebrate living upwards of 90 years in our county. However, those dreams are being dashed by solar companies that want to make a quick buck on the citizens of DeKalb County. The dreams of raising children on a rural farmstead where they can run free without care in the world has come crashing down, filled with a new view of dangerous, frightening solar panels that ruin the once-rural landscape. Through the research of many concerned citizens, we have found some important guidelines that we believe our elected officials have failed to recognize. The DeKalb County Comprehensive Plan, approved by the county commissioners, is a blueprint to focus and manage growth, improve and maintain infrastructure, promote economic development, and preserve and protect environmental and cultural resources towards cultivating a quality of life that makes DeKalb County a desirable place to live, work, and play. Now, I don't know about you, but having the view of utility-scale solar surrounding all sides of my home while having a government that grants tax abatements to a foreign company does not sound like a desirable place to raise my family. I am calling on the commissioners, the plan committee, and all other elected officials involved in the solar projects to work for the concerned citizens of the county. The Comprehensive Plan is a guideline made by the leaders for the leaders, and I ask that you use it. It has incredible information regarding decision-making for the county. It includes many references to preserving the, and I quote, "small-town and rural character of the county, which is of utmost importance to the residents." Nothing says "welcome to our rural community" better than roads lined with chain-linked fence guarding solar panel boneyards. Continuing with the Comprehensive Plan, it states that the plan recognizes the importance of conserving, preserving, and enhancing the environmental resources that contribute to the overall character of DeKalb County. The plan states that clean water, clean air, and an aesthetically pleasing environment are as important as having good schools and high-quality jobs. I have read an overwhelming amount of research that shows solar fields lead to the exact opposite of clean water, clean air, and an aesthetically pleasing environment. The Comprehensive Plan recognized, but what most of us recognize, that the soil in DeKalb County is the single-largest environmental asset, a direct quote from the plan. It's the foundation of the agriculture industry and is necessary for survival. If the commissioners and others that formed this Comprehensive Plan believed that the soil was necessary for survival in 2017, it is more necessary than ever right now. As I stated, I currently attend Purdue University studying animal sciences. Food insecurity is a massive problem in the world and something I learn about frequently. Taking 6,000 acres of farmland out of production is simply insane. The world population is predicted to grow to 10 billion by the year 2050, meaning farmers will need to invent new methods to feed more people with less land than ever before. Yes, some of this technology includes doubled years,
One minute.
Doubled yields, but that is not enough. DeKalb County should be working to improve the precious soil used for agriculture, not taking it away. Like I said, I want to raise a family here. However, land is increasingly expensive, and citizens are competing to purchase the precious resource. Now you are asking your citizens to outbid multi-billion-dollar companies if they want a shot at owning land in the county. This is discouraging and heartbreaking for young adults like myself. You are pushing us out of our hometowns by choosing to allow industrial solar into the community. Along with land use competition, other factors that have influenced my choices and made me weary about establishing a family here include a decrease in age groups other than 65. Slapping on a large-scale solar operation with no waste, fire, or monetary protection to the citizens only decreases that number. I don't know anyone that would like to raise their children, grandchildren, or loved ones next to a solar field. There are many counties around DeKalb that could become my home and the home of many of our bright, young citizens because we do not want our jobs, health, and children affected by the choices local officials and certain landowners make. The outlook of DeKalb County is grim with utility-scale solar. We are calling on you, as our elected leaders, to change this grim outlook. You may not see every repercussion that comes from your decisions, but those decisions will make an impact on every single generation that comes after you. If you truly want to be a good leader for this county, I challenge you to use the Comprehensive Plan written by the commissioners, listen to your people, fight for the rural, small-town atmosphere that makes DeKalb County so desirable, and make a change. My generation will not stand to have our homes and livelihoods ruined by utility-scale solar. Thank you.
I will call for a pro-solar rebuttal first. Anybody pro-solar who wants to have a...
This is for the...
This is, this is in favor, in favor of solar rebuttal.
I would like to address some of the comments that referred to Germany and some of their electric issues, and I'm sure just as well, and I think I've got some saved on my phone that way that tells the communities over there that have a wide range of renewable energies and the benefit it has to them. But I think what's most important is what's here at home in the state of Indiana. Just this past week, it was covered by the Indy Star that a group of businesses and cities within the state of Indiana had sent a request to Duke Energy and AES. within the state of Indiana had sent a request to Duke Energy and AES, not sure what that company is, but they were requesting more solar and renewable energy options. These companies included Walmart, Coca-Cola, Cummins, the cities of Indianapolis, and Bloomington. If there wasn't a demand for solar, solar would not be coming here. And another thing is sometimes the discussion gets lost in the adaption and locating a solar facilities gets lost in the political debate. I want to state that this should not, and is not, a left-leaning liberal versus right-wing conservative issue, no matter what picture people try to paint. The industry would not grow if there was not a demand for the energy they produce. And if you think about it, you would realize that the groundwork and initial plannings for these projects were, we're looking at here in the county, began not under the Biden administration, but under the Trump administration. There were filings done in 2019 that started the process of where we are today. Talking about UDO, and I know I talk on property rights, a lot of people talk on property rights. Yes, we understand there are limits to those property rights, but what we are attempting to do is follow the guidelines that are a part of that UDO, seven pages that was drafted for that after much public discussion, consideration, and so forth. If you look at it, you would realize the overlay does not give solar an advantage. It places them under much more restrictions than any other industry. What industry came to DeKalb County and was required to have a road-use agreement where they were going to have to pay for the roads that they used versus SDI, I hear mentioned? I believe the state of Indiana, more or less, built them a private driveway from US Highway 6 to their entrance, and yet we maintain it as the county, and probably some TIF funds are a part of that, so I don't want to indicate that that's not. What other industry is required to have a 400-foot setback? What other industry is required to have a decommissioning plan, bonding to do any cleanup? Should they fail to do it themselves? Yes, the overlay was created as a protection, not a protection for the solar company, but a protection for the neighbors. It gave extended setbacks, a long list of other things. These things were discussed, talked about. Solar didn't get everything they wanted. The citizens that objected to it didn't get everything they wanted. It was decided. We went for months, didn't hear anything. Talk about a fire plan. I think a lot of these things need to be addressed in the development plan. You can't address everything specifically in the UDO, and it's hard for them to go to the fire department to develop a fire plan when they don't even know that they're coming. Thank you.
Okay. The young lady that wanted to come up and speak.
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, I just want to say something to everybody real quick, because you guys are all talking very, very fast. If you are willing to let me make copies or anything of what you have read to us so that I can get these minutes as accurate as possible, I would appreciate it. I can make copies of them. If we can have names, I can give you my email address. Anything that would be helpful, because these minutes right now are a hot mess because I can't keep up with y'all.
I'm writing as fast as I can.
You can totally email me, yes.
Good news is, I'm going to talk really slow because I need to extend my time.
I know where to find you.
Great.
The young lady that wished to speak before?
No.
Okay, okay. Rebuttal.
All right.
Not in favor?
Not in favor rebuttal. Andrew Prolines, 3920 County Road 75. I actually don't think that I'll take the full five minutes. I think that most of what the side against solar needed to say, we've said tonight. I will say a couple of things. I will address a couple of the points, and I will talk about a couple other items. First, I'd like to say that every single morning since this fight began, I wake up and I ask myself if I am on the right side of this. I get up, I'm like, hmm, am I right here? Then I start to, I start to look at who's pushing this, the agenda that is pushing this. Just this morning, I saw an article that was basically climate, they hired a number of reporters to accentuate the climate crisis that went against science. I mean, the article, literally, it went against science and reality. Actually, it was reality and science. So I ask myself, okay, yeah, I'm on the right side of this at this point. If I'm not, I try to read a pro article or pro-solar article. I try to read one against it. I say, okay, I'm going to realign what I think. I'm going to gain a little more knowledge. I'm going to decide where I am. And I'm still against it. Not solar in general, utility-scale solar in any county, in my opinion, but specifically here in DeKalb. So we continue to fight every single day. We continue to fight to protect the landowners, not just our side, but the landowners who are actually signing their land up for solar. The bottom line is, these companies are not nice. They are not nice companies. It's interesting because the people behind them, the people, I don't know if any of them are here, but I've spoken to a lot of them, and actually, I kind of enjoy those people. They're fun to talk to. I wouldn't mind them coming to this county. The thing is, an executioner has a face behind the mask regardless. It's the companies, it's their agenda. They are not here to be our friends. They are here to make money off of us, no matter how they actually go about doing it. It's funny, if you do some research on energy, when we started using coal, that allowed us to have a middle class. The agenda that is in play here is now hoping to remove that middle class. This is a giant wealth transfer. We are transferring money from the middle class to the super wealthy, okay? They want to remove our middle class, not the local, not the local officials. I'm talking about the agenda, you know, the global agenda, the global agenda of this. That is what they're hoping to do. So they have good neighbor agreements, which basically say, you know what, you can never say anything bad about us, you can never take any legal recourse. That's what it tries to. And if you try to sell your house, you need to tell the next landowner or the next owner of your property, you can never talk against these companies. That's the kind of companies we're dealing with here. The overall global atmosphere, actually, not the global, national, America, has tried to put a gag order on people speaking out against this kind of stuff. People that say, hey, there's not a huge climate crisis, we're manufacturing this, are putting a gag order on us. They have said, we need tech companies to censor this for us based on a public health crisis or public health issue. That's how they want to actually censor us. The thing is, truth does not need to silence the opposition. You only need to silence the opposition if what you're saying is not true. I mean, that's what it comes down to. We were told the county does not have all the information. We don't have all the information, but what we did was, we went out and we said, we're going to try to gather some information. Right here I have the DeKalb County Citizens' Solar Assessment. This is 60 pages about. I mean, it's no omnibus, but I don't think I can, I don't think I can spend myself for that long. You know, it's nothing like that, but this is 60 pages chock-full of solar fighting goodness for the county to review, and I hope you will review it. I hope that you'll take this and absorb this knowledge. Take this information and convert it to, you know, useful legislation. We're going to bring more to you, though. I have an addendum in here. It's meant to be a living document. Just like solar power, we will intermittently bring you more information that you can use to form your decisions. Couple items I want to, I do want to address as an actual rebuttal.
One minute. You won't take your old wifi minutes, huh?
I might, I might. Just a couple items. The overlay, it does have additional restrictions, right? But the overlay says, hey, instead of zoning and being one zone, you can put them on anything. There's a public hearing when you change zones. This is just like, eh, you can do anything except for parks, which is cool. If you live in a park, you're not going to be affected. That's fantastic. People are asking for more renewable options. Companies are asking for more renewable options. Of course they are. It's a huge tax credit. We get a ton of money back. Yeah, I want renewable options, but I can't get that tax credit. I can't write that off. But if I was in that position, heck yeah, I'd want that. Uh, what else? What else have we got? Road projects. I don't even know where to begin with this. I know that the solar companies are going to be required to pave the roads around the projects. That's it, and that's actually not in the solar overlay, that's in the highway agreement. But yes, they're going to have to pave those. That's going to be nice for us. I have also been told that aside from a wheel tax and aside from the actual funds we received from the state, nothing else can be used on our roads. I asked outside of here, can we actually use this on the roads? Well, no, but, yeah, because we can't. We just can't do it. The LASSA, American-made, I asked them that actually at the meeting they had. I said, can you guarantee me that these panels are American-made? They said, well, we're going to try. We're going to try to make sure they're American-made. It's not guaranteed. We get it, it's not guaranteed. They flat-out said it.
Time.
Yo.
Time.
That'll work.
Thank you.
I'm going to put it on my calendar.
Sarah, I've got like 90 at home, ready to go.
Thank you.
One of these. You can have one as well. I request you electronic copies. Thank you.
I think that concludes the public comments. Okay. Rebuttal. We'll count it as a rebuttal.
I appreciate it. My name is Jessica Hardy, and I live right now on 20th Street in Auburn. For 32 years, I lived off of County Road 52 in Auburn. If nobody knows where that is, that is actually located behind the World War II Museum or the former World War II Museum in Auburn. Two years ago, I went to the original solar meeting. I wanted to make sure that the ordinance was strong. We had a strong ordinance. Mr. Watson, I don't know, three months ago, four months ago, again, pushed our ordinance. I am here fighting this because I am a person who is hurt by ordinances not being enforced. And the property I lived at for 32 years, they put a fence around it because the World War II Museum at the time said that they were going to build extravagantly. There was going to be racetracks and multiple buildings and all kinds of things. That never occurred. However, the fencing stayed. It was slammed right up against our property line, even a few inches into it. We fought and lost. The ordinance at the time stated to the property owners that it must be maintained, they must plant shrubbery and things around it. None of that ever occurred. The fencing became overgrown, it became disgusting, covered in everything under the sun you can imagine. We called this council on multiple occasions, nothing ever came of it. The properties around us suffered the same problems. So when these people come to you worried about this ordinance and saying that property values will decrease, it is absolutely the truth. When we sold three years ago, that was one of the things the realtors said that counted against us. Multiple people loved our home, told us it was beautiful, but they couldn't stand the mess, and there's no way to fix that. You can mow your side, but the other side is left. So I ask that if we do do this, because I don't see solar going away, not with our farmers, not when a 30-gallon glum of dry sifate is now $2,000, I ask that we must push this ordinance heavily. I noticed that the setbacks have changed. It was 400 feet away from a property line, that has changed. That cannot change. That 400 feet means a lot to a lot of people. I also worry about the fact that we were set in the paperwork that they had to prove that they had decommissioning money. I have not heard exactly how that money will be held accountable for. Is there going to be some commission's going to ask them how much money they have held? When or where or why? Because solar may take off. This may go wonderfully, but if it doesn't, who's accountable for the bill? Because I know that one of these companies is a byproduct of BP. BP does not have a great track record about taking care of people. So if something goes to pot and they go bankrupt and that money disappears, that farmer, is he on the line or we on the line as the county? We can't just have that sitting there. So I want to make sure that the ordinance is strong, it is enforced, and it is easily accessible to all. I also would like to put out there that years and years and years ago, this commission did say no to wind farming, and that was considered farming at the time. So if we said no to windmills, where's the precedent there for saying yes or no to solar? Again, I don't think it's going away, but if you're going to argue logically with law, if we said no to windmills, what are we saying about solar? I also worry about the fact that we wanted to give tax abatements on this, and we're using it, I think, under some blight rules. DeKalb County is growing rapidly. I'm going to sit in on a meeting tomorrow about our growth in DeKalb County. If we set this precedent that our farmland can be considered blight, we are opening the door to anything being considered that, and that does worry me as a taxpayer. Again, I appreciate this time from you gentlemen, and you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will call for one more rebuttal. For, in favor of, solar? Okay. We got one. Just evening it out here.
Just to be short, I've heard on three different occasions here that chemicals are falling down, and I guess I'd like to know what chemical, the name of the chemical, so I could look it up to see how hazardous it is.
Do you have the name of the chemical? Get Mr. Stewart, if you do.
I have some chemicals if you want me to bring them up.
I think it's called unobtained.
I'm Dana Craft, 5501 County Road 75A. Some of the toxic chemicals in solar panels are camdium, tellurid, I'm sorry, I'm not going to spell, probably pronounce them right, copper endium, celledine, cadium gallium dicellinide, copper endium gallium dicellinide, hexafluorothane lead, palavinylfluoride silicon, tetchafluoride, byproduct of producing crystalline silicon and camdium. I remembered actually bringing this up in my safety and environmental concerns that I was shot down during the Eastside meeting that we were told that we could attend, but we couldn't really tell our real concerns because it was only for ordinance. They told me, you know, these health concerns and environmental concerns weren't going to be addressed. So when were they going to be addressed? Every time I've come to a meeting, it's like, it's not about that at this time. So I'm glad I got to at least bring that up, and I also sent an email to you guys a couple weeks ago about the EPA actually did find, they, yeah, they fined the solar companies, I think it was in North Carolina. If you look at my email, you would know. But these companies would rather just pay fines than worry about our health. And, you know, all these things that I've rattled off, they have to do with things like cancer and major concerns, reproductive health, it can hinder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That would conclude the public portion. Lynn?
In discussion of fairness, you allowed an extra speaker from that.
Have you got somebody else that would speak?
I would, yes. If someone else wants to speak, I think it would be appropriate for them to have the opportunity.
One more then. Anyone, anyone in favor of, want to express a rebuttal? Okay.
All right, I got no papers. I'm Brett Helbert from Butler, Indiana. Hunter, wildlife photographer and wildlife artist. I share common interest with a lot of people in here as far as hunting. One of my biggest concerns, I share common interest with property with Lynn Reinhardt. I lease his property to deer hunt. And one thing I'd like to kind of address, I talked to Sculpin at one of the library, at the meetings at the library. There's a bird, northern harrier, that is on the state endangered species list. I do, everybody that owns farms in this room, they hunt, they migrate down, and they hunt these properties. in this room, they hunt. They migrate down and they hunt these properties. Me being a wildlife, enjoying wildlife and taking photography, it's a kind of a passion of mine, but to see this property go to the wasteland, it just bothers me. I want these people to understand that this ground that, that they might be putting into solar farms, we might, that habitat would be kind of going away.
Yes, sir. This was a call for somebody in favor of.
I thought you said it was in, not in favor. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Yeah, we were.
Does anybody use that spot?
No.
I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
We will conclude this at this time.
All right.
I think we've heard, uh, really many good comments.
My bad, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
See what you did, Lynn?
At this point, commissioners, Todd, Mike, any comments you'd care to make at this point?
If, if you're all here and you want to hear my thoughts, I'm happy to give them. I've, I've written as fast as I could here. So if I missed any comments, I'll start if you don't mind.
I just got one thing to say. Let me just get that out of the way. Real short.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just want to make one correction to Jessica's comments. There have been no changes in setbacks or anything else in the ordinance. The original ordinance is still in effect. And to your question on the decommissioning agreement, the solar companies have to post a bond, a sugary bond, in the amount of 115% of the cost of decommissioning. That's held in the name of the county. So if they up and disappear, that money's already set aside by a bonding company.
And that is reevaluated every five years?
Five years, yeah.
Do you take into consideration inflation? Or it'd be renewed or reevaluated as far as the amount of that bond?
Am I limited to five minutes?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Oh, boy.
How fast can you listen? So I'm gonna try to make this real quick.
I'm kidding.
No, no, I, I want to, um, good comments, thank you from everyone, pro and against. It was very, everyone was cordial, nice. Facts came out, not just emotions, and I appreciate that. So, big, two big things I heard. Big key words I heard, looking out for DeKalb County, best interests. And on top of that, land use rights. So, looking out for best what DeKalb County is for DeKalb County. Well, that's subjective. For some people, it's the income that comes in. Boy, we can have roads, schools will do better, this, that. For other people, it's protecting what they, when they bought their land. This is what I bought. This is the view I had. We can debate that long and hard and maybe not get anywhere there. However, what it really falls down to is your rights as DeKalb County landowners. And your rights are specifically outlined in your current zoning. In other words, when you buy ag, you can do a farm, you can build a house on it, you can do barns, you can grow crops. You can't put in a housing addition, you can't put in a factory, you can't do any of that. You have to convert that land to industrial. Under the old plan, you would have to convert that to industrial. Now, for the anti-solar people, I want to give you this warning on this. If it gets converted to industrial, the setbacks are less. And, and it could be actually more detrimental to you. However, with that said, that should have been the policy we followed. That's been in existence since 1964. I will take the blame for approving the overlay. I, you can put it right here. I didn't have all the facts. It's my fault. It wasn't Chris Gomer's fault. It wasn't the council's fault. I didn't really understand overlays well until I looked into the airport overlay and what the idea of an overlay was for. And it was really to be more restrictive on the land, not to be, uh, less restrictive. And there was a good point. If you're gonna tax the land industrial, why wouldn't you convert it to industrial? I agree 100%. I think it should have to go into rezoning and be industrial because it's an industrial application. You know, where does it end? You know, if a strip club operator wants to have an overlay for strip clubs? Well, no, we don't allow them here. Well, make me an overlay. I'm being a little facetious there, but I'm just saying, where does it end where we just make special agreements for people because the money comes? And I would really, my personal opinion is we need to scrap the overlay completely and just make people convert to industrial. And again, it may hurt some of you people that are against solar because it's gonna be industrial setbacks, period. But it gives you time to rebut what is being presented. In other words, come up with some facts and individually say, is this land the best use? And that's one other comment I wanted to make. As commissioners, we are ultimately supposed to decide the best use of the land. I would agree with Mr., oh, the gentleman, was it Mr. Hoover? One of them, I think it was Mr. Hoover, that said that 200 acres of his land doesn't get farmed because of, it's in a program or it's erosion. That, that might be perfect land for solar. And I think we ought to look at each land use. If you have land, farmland that's making 208, or 200 bushels of corn per acre, that's pretty darn efficient good land. I don't think I can call that blighted farmland. River bottom, erosion land, hilly land that isn't good to farm, I can see that being solar or whatever comes in. I don't think we can say, hey, solar can't come here, they're bad people. They have a legal business. However, I think our overlay gave them special privilege and I, I don't like it. So, I, I agree with both sides' comments on land rights, but your land rights are identified by your zoning. And I'm gonna say this to the anti-solar people, you don't own the view across from you. However, when you did buy your land, you knew that land was zoned ag, and you said, if it's gonna change, I can fight it individually, or I can at least express my concerns individually. And I think we should individually look at these projects instead of just doing a blanket overlay. Because the blanket overlay, what it brought in is carte blanche. We know what we can do. Let's grab as much as we can as fast as we can. So that's my opinion. I'm not anti-solar. I'm not anti-pro solar. I want to go back, though, to, this country is so screwed up now because we just keep adding more and more overlays and laws and abatements and the complexity. You know, I've been in business for 40 years and I still can't figure out the tax codes. I still can't figure out what the laws are. And I just think we've made it too complex and we should just stick to the original zoning. And again, it may hurt some of the anti-solar people. Some may be affected very badly. But that is true progress. That is the way it was laid out, and I think it should stay that way. So that's my opinion.
Anything else, Mike? I would only address maybe the efficiency of solar. I had solar put on my barn roof in July. September, my best month, 912 kilowatt hours produced by that solar panels. October, just two months later, it dropped to half, 450 kilowatt hours produced in that month. December, I don't even wanna talk about December. I don't think I'm gonna make 100. I don't know yet exactly, but I don't think I'm gonna make 100. This leads me to another comment, then. During our codes bill, INM requested a reduction in electric usage because, why you suppose? I didn't get an answer on that, but I can only surmise, because the solar was not producing anything, they were not set up to revert back quick enough to coal or gas, and so were asked to reduce usage. This is gonna lead, this is just the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot more icebergs out there. When, when they expand this solar, to me, what I'm looking at theoretically, we're gonna have problems when it gets cold, when it's, when it does, the sun does not shine. Speaking of sunshine, you look at the, the maps, Indiana has just a little over 2,000 sunlight hours, not sunlight days. We're talking hours of sunlight, a little over 2,000 hours of sunlight a year. Arizona has 3,500 hours of sunlight. Obviously, Arizona's a lot better fit for solar than Indiana. I'm just, I'm not saying that I'm against or for. I put it on my barn roof. And I'll tell you what, why would we take the most efficient way to produce food and exchange it for the most inefficient way to produce electricity?
One other point I would make out, and then Mike, if you'd like to comment. We have enough coal and natural gas in this country to power us 500 years. And we instead, I don't understand this concept, but we dig up our coal, we put it on a ship, shun it to China, they burn it inefficiently, pollute the air, send us solar panels that are inefficient, then we give tax abatements, and then take away our food, which also makes renewable energy. It's called beans and corn makes ethanol and biodiesel. So we lose, 20 years ago, the federal government says ethanol, biodiesel, it's the best thing ever, farmers, it's good for farmers. Now they say, well, no, solar panels are better. If you follow the money trail, this all started, you know, mentioned Trump, and I'll agree, he signed on to this, and I'm really disappointed in Trump, won't vote for him again. But this started not with Trump and not with conservatives. This is a wealth transfer program to put you subject under the world order that's coming. They control your, it starts in the schools, too. Folks, the liberals learned long ago, if you indoctrinate the kids, they'll vote the way you want. If you get them on the social programs and take, and say, here's your money you have, they'll, they'll go, grow accustomed to that and won't better themselves. This is the way our country's going, and if we don't take a stand locally, the federal government and the state government will control us. And again, I'm not anti-solar. These people have legitimate businesses, legal businesses. And if they play by our rules, which was the original zoning, I have no problem with it because that, you have a farm. You want to sell the land. You want to sell that land and convert it to industrial? That is your right. And I think you should have that right to do that. The overlay is my problem again. And again, I think we've fallen into that agenda, this global agenda. You go to Europe, electricity's 10 times higher. Why? Because they don't use any natural resource, they don't use the resources God gave us. They expect other countries to, to produce their power. And look how that, you know, Russia controls Europe right now for that reason. So, again, I'm done. I'll bloviate too long. You can always convert land back to ag. That's not a problem. Absolutely. Abs, absolutely. Why wouldn't we allow that to go back to? I would always go to a more conservative land use if possible. The onus is on the folks that want to convert it to industrial. That's the hard part. Now, if land is converted to industrial, though, just so you know, and it becomes a dumping site of toxic chemicals, that could be a problem. But let's face it, 30 years, you and I might not even be here. You're younger than me, so you might be. But I'm not probably gonna be here. I guarantee you, when you build 6,000 acres of panels or 4,000, whatever it might be, you say, well, in 30 years, we'll put it back to farm. You really think so? Want me to tell you what's gonna happen around that land? It's gonna be industrial that'll build around the land, because the houses will move out, industrial buy it up, and they'll say, you know what? This is now an industrial park.
I wish I had a crystal ball.
No, I'm just giving my opinions now. So.
Commissioner comments. Go ahead, Lynn.
I just wanted to make one comment. The land that we have, my wife said we are not fighting. I want to address you saying that if it's not a ag, just solar, it will not go back. If I would be alive, it will most definitely go back. If my daughter and son-in-law would also support that decision, it shouldn't be theirs. That's a fact of ag. That land has been in the court for 30 years. It will go back.
Well, and that's, that's a good point. But I would also like to say, if it's not in the ordinance, it doesn't exist. If you're not willing to make that as a guarantee and your kids guarantee and sign on it, that's just a statement at this point, just like solar saying.
And there's.
Not knocking you, I'm just telling you, both sides. I'm seeing both sides.
That's part of the issue between an overlay and, and a rezoning industrial, in that if SDI closes up or Metal Technologies or anybody else, that land is a brownfield.
Possibly.
No, not possibly. That land is a brownfield. You know, with the solar land, there is no permanent structures there, except for the substations, which have a small footprint. All they do is pull everything out and it's back to ag.
That's true.
Without any, any other issues. I want, I got one thing to say, and this has got nothing to do with pro or anti or anything else. This is just a fact that we're dealing with. We talk about wanting to keep this simple, wanting to keep things straightforward. This debate doesn't happen in a bubble. And there are folks in Indianapolis that would love to reconstitute House Bill of 1381, which actually passed the House, 58 to 36, I think, and would have passed a Senate if, except for a technology, a technical glitch. 1381 says that the state will set the zoning and siting regulations for alternative energy, and local governments cannot do anything more restricted than what the state says. And that bill is far from, from dead as, as far as the aspirations of some folks that are still in the legislature. So, that's just for what it's worth.
That's true.
That doesn't mean anything, except that's a fact of this debate and the debate taking place in, in a, some of the other counties around the state is not taking place in a bubble. It's, people are, people are taking notes.
Okay.
That's true.
Susan, do you have anything else?
No, but you told Larry he could talk.
Larry Williams, 2418 Woodland Trail, Auburn. I've spoken here a couple times. Just to reiterate, we are talking about, there was discussion of, of foreign-owned entity being granted tax abatement. That's not, in my mind, correct, a correct thing to do. Another thing is, Mike Pompeo wrote an article about Chinese slave labor used in the production of solar panels, that some people say up to 80% of solar panels have Chinese slave labor content in it. In terms of the discussion of land rights, I would make a comment. I believe many farm owners receive substantial federal farm subsidies every year. So, that is something I am aware of. I grew up in a farm east of town. My, my family had a farm implement dealership in Anderson, Indiana. I get, I understand the farm economy regarding the companies like Walmart and some of these big companies asking for more solar. The whole discussion about ESG scores, which is essentially a corporate scoring, uh, design for environmental, social, and governments, is designed for companies to be graded on their desirability, not on their profitability, but on their desirability to, uh, large investment companies. That, if you think about it, well, let's be real about this. There are many attorney generals in Midwestern states that are, have launched lawsuits against ESG scoring. Those companies that you talk about, large companies that want more of solar, are trying to boost these ESG scores. Those are designed to control, take more control of those, those entities. And regarding the science, there is a great deal of counter factual information that is being put in the newspapers about solar energy. The idea that solar energy does anything really to reduce carbon in the air is a very dubious scientific claim. Those are my rebuttals, period.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that will conclude our meeting, and, uh, I will ask that we vacate the courthouse by 8:30 so they can close up.
Five minutes to spare.
All right, we're on time for once.
We are adjourned, gentlemen.
You're buying me dinner. What are you talking about?